Thank you.
Good evening. Christine Diaz, probably a familiar face by now. On Wednesday, October 12th, Denise Carter and I met with the building level team as it relates to special ed services for both the 11th grade and the upcoming 11th graders for next year. On Monday, November 7th, I came to the board meeting to bring this to your attention, offering to collaborate on brainstorming a solution for this year for the students struggling today. On Monday, December 6th, I came and spoke to you again, asking for your support, asking for you to partner with parents and the students to find a solution now before it's too late this year. I even offered a solution to start the discussion. Not discussion, excuse me. Nothing, no response. I will say, I appreciate that you, I'm sorry, I don't know your name, acknowledged my request and said it to the board that this is something that needs to be addressed. But I'm wondering, did you all think that was it? That was a response? It was just brought to my attention that it was brought up in last week's, the last board meeting. So here we are today, and frankly, it almost feels like it's too late. Is the tactic to simply ignore my pleas for support and partnership and hope that I get tired of asking? I'm tired. I'm tired of trying to say it at just the right way so you hear me. I'm tired of writing and rewriting my comments to explain the situation within the allotted three minutes. I'm tired of trying to educate you and others on learning differences when I'm not sure you're even listening. I'm tired of asking for your support for something that should have already been in effect. I'm tired of being ignored. I'm tired of waiting 15 weeks for so much as an acknowledgement of my concerns. Frankly, I'm disappointed that no one at any level of the education system in Cornwall has reached out to me or given me any sense that you're listening. It is disrespectful, and I hope you'll think about what it must be like for a parent to come here and be so vulnerable on their child's behalf in a public setting for their needs of their child. And yet, I come again. Despite being tired and frustrated, I am asking you to please hold one another accountable to explore the issues currently affecting your 11th grade students and commit to implementing some creative solutions this year. What is being done with the federal funding for tutorials? Why are you waiting to implement something that certainly shouldn't have taken 15 weeks to implement? It could have been in place helping the midterms happening this week. This is more than just the end of year grade that I'm talking about. This is about the student's dignity, their self-worth, and believing that they can be successful even if it's not the same way everyone else does it. You have powerful neurodivergent thinkers and doers in your schools. Honor them and do what's right.
Thank you, Ms. Diaz. Anyone else? Okay, we will now move to our reports. We'll start with our student representatives' reports. We will have to rely solely on Colton tonight. So are you ready for all of them? Okay, great. Take it away.
The first good news is the Cornwall Central Middle School good news. The CCMS music department held their winter concerts at CCHS. The audience was treated to beautiful performances by all of our bands, orchestra, and choruses. Many thanks to the CCMS music department for all of the work planning these events. We appreciate all you do to allow our students to make music. The CCMS library reopened its doors to students for its first book checkout in the new space. 8th grade students were given first dibs on scouring the shelves and checking out our new beautiful space. 5th grade students and Ms. Harnett's class launched their class-based coffee business, Heartbucks on Wheels. After making a full business presentation to Mrs. Palumbo and Mr. Brennan, the class launched their first weekly delivery. Students will be responsible for preparing orders, maintaining inventory, issuing invoices, and providing customer service. The good news for COH. The social, emotional trait of diversity has been prevalent throughout the COH community during the month of January. The staff have been working hard with the students to celebrate the differences amongst us that make us unique. COH celebrated Dress as Your Future Self Day on January 20th. Students dressed in clothes and costumes that depicted what they want to be when they grow up. The halls were filled with police, firefighters, teachers, doctors, baseball players, nurses, and scientists. On January 13th, COH held a Stuff the Bus event. The students in the 1st grade, along with the student council, loaded a small school bus with the donations from the Keep It Clean drive that was held in December. The children then walked to the food bank of the Hudson Valley, watched the materials be unloaded, and then took a tour of the facility. The staff and students were amazed at how many people the food, or how many people the food bank services. The trip was very educational and eye-opening for all. Congratulations to 4th grader Ellie Alcorn for earning a spot as alternate saxophone in the elementary all-county band. Ellie auditioned, competed against 4th, 5th, and 6th graders across Orange County. We are very proud of her accomplishment. Many 3rd and 4th grade students have been working diligently preparing for the upcoming elementary science expo, which is being held on January 31st at the middle school from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. Snow day is on February 1st at the same time. January brought the start of drama rehearsals at COH. The PTO is excited for the upcoming production of Beauty and the Beast Jr. The adults and students involved are super excited and are making terrific progress. We are all looking forward to a wonderful show. The Willow Ave good news. Willow Ave kicked off the new year with kindness. Students have been studying the work of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. through reading articles and books, watching videos, and singing songs. They learned about Dr., they learned that Dr. King had a dream where everybody would be kind, helpful, and respectful to others. So in response, we have decided to once again participate in a special kindness project to celebrate his message. Starting January 14th and ending on Monday, February 14th, we are going to see if, as a school, we can complete 1,000 acts of kindness. On Friday, January 13th, Willow will show their dragon pride by dressing in green as we welcomed Carrie Beloga to our Friday morning opening to celebrate her national championship. Carrie spoke to the students about integrity, the importance of being a good teammate, and working hard. Thank you for visiting, Carrie. We always have a home at Willow, or you always have a home at Willow. On Monday, February 13th, all of our band students will come together for our second annual band expo. Each ensemble will perform a song selection with the evening culminating with almost 300 of our grade 4 to 12 band students playing "America." It will be a spectacular event, and we hope to see you there. The Cornwall Elementary School good news. Happy New Year. As always, there is so much good news to spread this month from Cornwall Elementary School. Before we left for a break, our students got in the holiday spirit with some visits from the CCHS core students. The a cappella groups, The Love Notes, and The Trouble in Paradise held a special performance for our 4th graders to show them what musical extracurricular activities await them once they move up to the high school. Each group performed two songs followed by a short Q and A with the singers. Then, on December 22nd, the concert choir toured our halls and performed holiday carols for the whole school. The staff also, the staff also got to enjoy a sweet treat before the winter recess. Our Sunshine Committee partnered with Santoros to bring in a delicious array of coffees, teas, and hot chocolate. Then we left for winter recess, and our staffs and students got to enjoy some time off to celebrate the holidays with family and friends. On January 14th, the Cornwall Elementary School PTO Drama Club presented Seussical the Musical. On Friday afternoon, we held a spirit assembly to give the performers an opportunity to showcase their hard work for the rest of the school. Then, on Friday evening, the cast held an open dress rehearsal where the students and parents could get a sneak peek before the big night. Finally, on Saturday, at 1:00 p.m. and 4:00 p.m., they officially opened their show. Between the vibrant sets, catchy music, and wonderful performances, the production was one for the books. We are so thankful for PTO President Brigitte Cardy, Mr. Hines, and all other volunteers who made the show possible. This past Wednesday marked the beginning of our after-school activities, a program run by the PTO that offers our students a wide variety of activities to participate in. Tennis, soccer, cooking, smarts and crafts, and fun with STEM are just a few of the programs being offered, all led by volunteers from our community. The after-school activities give our students the opportunity to try something new and spend time learning about the topics that interest them. It's hard to believe that January is almost over. We are looking forward to the elementary school expo, the Coral Workshop, and 4th grade Winter Fest. This is the CCHS good news. Cornwall High School has been very busy since we last met. We had a holiday sweater contest and sold candy grams at lunch before winter break. Our winter sports teams continue to battle it out this season. Our dragon wrestling team has won countless tournaments and duels against some of the top competition in the section. Our boys swim and dive team ended their season against FDR and celebrated six seniors on senior night on the 18th. This past weekend, the track and field won divisions. The boys and girls basketball team have had great seasons as we pass the midway point in the season. Last Tuesday, the boys' basketball team held a fundraiser at Brothers BBQ where there was tremendous support from the community. The cheerleading team just finished their yearly competition in Dallas this past weekend as well. We are very excited to see what 2023 brings at Cornwall High School.
Thank you, Colton. Appreciate the in-depth dive. I know that you were solo tonight, so take a breath. And if you have any homework or anything, you can obviously leave. Okay, so, good. Avail yourself of that opportunity. We'll see you next time. Thank you. If anybody, if, do any board members have midterms? Now's the time. Okay, that brings us to our superintendent's report, so I will hand that off to Mr. Terry Day.
Thank you, Mr. Cardy. So just as a quick review of last week's meeting, I know it was referenced, but Mr. Cardy did share with the community what our plan is to address concerns that have been raised with regards to our special education students in the high school. And while it's extremely difficult to make shifts in personnel and budget, when a budget's already been approved by the board, we are, we've been absolutely committed to trying to find support for those kiddos. So we are working through a plan right now that until it's solidified, we're just not ready to share everything about it, but it involves pushing support for selected classes and regions in addition to tutorial hours and things of that nature. So we're taking it extremely seriously. It's just not easy to do so when it's mid-budget. So once that plan has been solidified, we'll be sure to share with parents and the board at large. But we're really proud of our team for looking for creative solutions to make sure that our supports are where needed. The only thing I wanted to speak to tonight, Megan and I had distinct pleasure of joining our Cornwall varsity baseball team. There were seven baseball players, student athletes, that are playing at the next level, so they had their signing day celebration last week. Last week, yes, today is Monday. And I've been to quite a few over the years. Cornwall does a fantastic job of, of getting their players, their scholar athletes to the next level. But there's never been one that I was kind of as moved as this one. One, we had seven athletes who were playing together since they were six or seven, so it was really neat to see them all grow up together and acknowledge each other with regards to how, how long they've been here. But there was one of the seven who recently moved here from the city, and he shared kind of his disdain for his, his family for moving him away from his friends. He kicked and screamed, did not enjoy the move to Cornwall at all until he joined the baseball team and really immersed himself in that camaraderie that comes with that, the excellence that Coach Fanning has developed and is, is the culture that we would all hope to emulate. But seeing on his face and his parents' faces, and he said in his own words how appreciative he was to be here. And I'm just reminded all the time of us not losing sight of the blessings that we have. Not everyone is as fortunate as our students and us around this table to be in such an amazing school district. But it was great to be reminded of that from an actual student and his family during that signing day. So I was absolutely touched, and it was great to see the impact of why we do what we do each and every day really come to fruition for this young man and him going off to play at the next level because of what we've provided here in Cornwall. So just wanted to share that, and I'll pass it along to Mr. Cardy.
Thank you, Terry. So that brings us to the president's report. And the only issue that I just want to raise for, for everybody's attention is the Capitol Conference. This is the yearly meeting of school advocates. Basically, think of it as the period where all school advocates get together in Albany before the governor puts the budget together to try to influence essentially the creation of the budget in alignment with our priorities. So the conference day this year is Friday, February 10th, and then what they had, what they call the Capitol Conference Lobby Day is the following Wednesday, February 15th. Now, Jim signed up to be the legislative liaison, I think maybe before he realized that there was a trip to sunny Albany in his future. But in, in February, the best time of year to visit Albany. So he, what's going to happen is Jim is either going to be there in person or by Zoom if they offer that option. And representatives from all across the county meet with our representatives in Albany. So that's now ACUS and SCUFS. And they have a list of advocacy priorities that they agree on, that the group, it's, you know, pushes as a whole. But as districts, we come up with our own list of things that we would like to, to have Jim advocate for on our behalf. So I would ask, similar to how we did the board goals, if everybody can email me directly issue or two that you, you feel would be important enough to advocate for at the, the state level, I'm going to, just so that there's not redundancy, I'm going to email you the, the final bullet point of, a bullet list of points that the Orange County School Board Association will already be advocating on, just so that we don't waste any effort there. And, you know, it's, it could be things like, you know, if there's a need for, you know, particular kind of funding, I want you to think in terms of that. It's not just, you know, educational ideas, but try to think of something that would be tied to the budget, because that's really the process that this is all streamlined through. If you can get that to me by end of this week, well, let's, let's put it by end of Sunday to give, people have different schedules going into the weekend, then Jim and I can meet and we'll put together a list of final priorities, and that'll be what we, we present in Albany. Okay, and I'll send a follow-up email tomorrow just to summarize some of that stuff. Great, so that moves us to the consent agenda. The consent agenda allows the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover relatively routine matters. Is there any member of the board who would like to pull an item off the consent agenda? Yep, Richard?
Brendan, so number two, the minutes for January 9th.
Got it.
And number three, personnel actions, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following consent agenda items as submitted by the superintendent of schools, so that, those are items four through seven. Do I have a motion? Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried. Okay, so item number two under consent agenda is the recommended actions for the month. Resolved upon the recommended action of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education does accept the following recommended actions. Take the rest per document. Do I have a motion? Second?
Second.
And discussion.
Yep, so I just want to make sure the, you know, earlier I brought up a, a comment about the, the minutes, and I want to make sure that the amended comments are in the new minutes about what I, what I brought up earlier. And they are? About providing an explanation for item number six?
Yep.
Okay, they are? Okay, thank you. Yeah?
I'm unaware that minutes were amended. When were they amended? Today?
We're voting on the amendment today.
So just to confirm the, so Terry, you're saying the, this represent, what we're looking at on board docs is the amended? Right. Terry sent out an email late this afternoon saying that he was updating it, so 4:30? I mean, I don't know the exact time.
I did not, I did not, I did not see that.
Yeah, yeah.
I did not see that.
That was in response to the original request.
I think it's on the printed copy. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Are the minutes on here?
Yeah, they're in the separate, I have a separate packet here.
And they're in board, and they're in board docs.
Yep.
And I can read the amended.
Changed on.
Yeah, can we just talk about the change?
Sure, just read it off.
I didn't realize there were actually changes.
So the original minutes stated that Mr. Schaffner had asked questions about the resolution, and I had sent an email out to the board explaining it fully without the explanation included. So we included the explanation for number six for the transfer from one item to another. And the amended item now reads, Richard Schaffner asked about the resolution, and Mr. Day said information on this resolution had been sent to the board in an earlier email. This transfer is being made because we got a better deal on some computer equipment through Bosse's than purchasing directly from the vendor. The funds are budgeted for in the non-Bosse's equipment line, so they now need to be transferred, moved to the Bosse's line. So it was just information that was.
Enrich the minutes, thank you.
That was, we just added more detail there, nothing else was changed. Great, thank you.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried. Brings us to the third item under the consent agenda. Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education does hereby accept the following personnel actions. Take the rest per document. Do I have a motion?
Move.
Second?
Second.
And discussion.
Yep. So can, Terry, can you just explain, because I know on the, the website, there's two new positions that were posted. Can you just give a little bit more information on that to the public here? Thank you.
So it's not in personnel actions, but that was a question raised by a board member. So on the website, we posted for a special education position and an E and L position. There is a retirement up for approval on personnel actions this evening. There was a special education position posted earlier. Anyone in education knows that these are hearts of staff positions. So with knowledge of these retirements, we posted early. So if we are able to find qualified personnel, that's a huge advantage for us going into the 23, 24 school year. It also allows us some flexibility if we're able to find a highly qualified candidate that can start earlier in this year to address any emerging needs that the district experiences like the parents that have spoken to us very passionately about supports for students at the high school. So that's the posting.
Yeah, and of course, these are, both of these positions are something that I, I see as very important, and we need these as a district. So let's say we hire somebody mid-year, like if we find somebody to help our, our students now, what would be the financial impacts of the district? Where would we get these funds? Would that be through the federal funds?
Undecided at this time. There's lots of different options, but once the decision's made, if we are able to hire, we would be able to explain further.
Explain further, okay. So, so, so right now, you wouldn't be, it wouldn't be known if we were going to use federal funds or, or budgetary?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried. Okay, that brings us to our second recognition of visitors. So anyone wishing to speak is invited to step forward to the microphone, identify yourself, and limit comments to three minutes. Thank you.
Didn't write and rewrite these, so if it's babbling, I apologize in advance. I want to acknowledge you did bring it up at the last board meeting. I did not see those minutes, and I take responsibility for that, as well as I didn't think it was a public meeting I could attend. I misunderstood it, so I acknowledge that. No one still reached out to me personally, but at least it was addressed here. Mr. Day, you're saying, if you get a candidate now, I lead an HR function for a pretty big organization, recruiting falls under me. I know how difficult it is to get a good candidate. So in eight weeks, we're likely to still be having the same conversation. So I'm asking you, please, call me. I will brainstorm. I will come up with creative solutions for now. We can't wait to hire your exceptional special ed teacher that has to be onboarded, et cetera, et cetera, and then getting the funding approved. It, it's going to be too late. We have kids who are failing both emotionally and intellectually because they don't have the support they need. So please, I know you're proud of them, but these 16 and 17-year-olds are going out soon on their own, and they can't leave feeling like failures just because we didn't do what we should have done. Please.
Thank you, Ms. Diaz. Anybody else? Yep.
Good evening, Carl Gilpatrick, John Street in Cornwall. Last, at the last meeting we were at, I asked a couple of questions, and one was, does every student in Cornwall have a Chromebook? That wasn't answered tonight, so I was just wondering if we ever, you know, came around to figuring that out. I could give you the answer. The answer is no. So I just thought that maybe somebody would answer that question for me from the, you know, from the school board. You guys got to get more involved, the elected officials here. You have to get more involved. There's no, no talking whatsoever. I mean, this is crazy. We sit back here and we just, we just watch the heads nod, and there's nothing. We got to, I asked you about this, this Mrs. Diaz here, about getting help for the kids. Mr. Cardy, you said to me that you reached out to them. That's what you told me at the last meeting. Apparently, you didn't. What's going on? Is there only two people making the decisions for Cornwall School? It seems to me, Mr. Cardy, you're one, and Mr. Day is the other, and the rest of you is nod your head. You got to get, I'm sorry. I, I, I just hope you can see what we're seeing back here. You know, it just, how do we drop the ball on helping kids? How do we drop the ball? We're posting, we're posting for positions, okay? We're posting positions up, but yet we can't get anybody else to help kids in need who are getting ready to graduate. That has to be a priority. That has to be something that you guys need to discuss, whether it be in the executive session, but it needs to be acted on now. You can't continue to wait. It's not fair. I mean, this is, I, I, I just, I'm, I can't believe that I'm actually up here, because tonight I actually was going to, I, I just wanted to sit back and see, you know, if any of the questions we've been asking over time have been asked. Who makes the decisions on the Chromebooks? Does anybody know that? There's, there's no committee for it. So who makes the decisions on, on getting these obsolete Chromebooks that we keep throwing out to the kids? Someone was here a couple of months ago, asked for touch, touchscreen Chromebooks. Apparently, this is being recommended, and it's just getting thrown to the side. We pay too much money for this kind of stuff. You know, I, I know you, I know you find me humorous, I know, Mr. Day. I've seen a lot of the videos. You find a lot of people humorous.
I was, I was not looking at you.
It's okay, it's okay. We can move on.
Mr. Gilpatrick, please, please.
Just get your remarks on.
This is, look, this is, you, you've spoken enough at, at meetings. You know, you know the standard. Just make your point. You're given a platform to make your point.
Yeah, and I just, listen, I've been begging yous. I've been here for three, four meetings now. I've been begging yous. Talk. Let us see what's going on. Let us see that you're trying to get these, this equipment in. You know, let, let us see you're trying to help the people. We don't know. We have no idea. We hear from Mr. Day, and we hear from Mr. Cardy, and that's it. And we think the rest of yous just forgot about it. You are the ones that run this school district. The elected people run this school district. You're the ones that set the standard on what goes on here. Just start acting on it. That's it. Which is all we're asking.
Just making sure. So I really wasn't planning on saying anything, but I just wanted to say, as a parent of a child who's had some issues over the years, I was very. say, as a parent of a child who's had some issues over the years, I was very nervous about him coming into the high school. Thus far, he is thriving, doing better than I anticipated. This is a kid who had OT, PT, had AIS. He's getting it now at the high school. He's getting AIS. We got the letter. Maybe not every kid is, but he is getting it. I emailed the teacher. The teacher's in communication with me. I've emailed numerous board members up here. Thank you for responding to me. I'm not saying everything's roses. I will critique when appropriate, but not everything is poor communication. Certain things possibly. Can we always improve? Yes. I work in education. I've worked at four colleges, two private high schools. There are always hiccups, and there are always issues, but it's not all gloom and doom. And I think it's really important that people in the wider school district do realize that there's ups and downs, and you all are volunteers. You all only have so much time to get back to the public, so I give you credit for stepping up and volunteering, and hopefully, we will have more people in the audience, as I like to say in future board meetings, and speaking up and voicing their concerns. Thank you. Victoria Halfpenny, my troop came a few months, few months back, and Mrs. Plumb did talk to them about the dress code, so thank you.
Thank you, Victoria. Anybody else? Okay, so we will move to our board closing comment. So I will start with Teresa.
Hey, got it. So, since she was greedy, I had to put notations on my cell phone. But I guess this will have to do since, it's what I got. I, I had mentioned last week, not last week, January 9th, when we had had our last board meeting, that basically with our new budget, I did want to put more of an emphasis on looking at, well, I kind of call it a little differently, learning differently. Still just LD, special ed, I don't know. They're acronyms, and sometimes they're also misrepresented, and they're not nice. You just spoke to the point about a small little boy you met from the city and how baseball made such a huge difference suddenly, not only in acclimating himself to our community, but I'm sure educationally, because if a child's unhappy, they're not going to do well in school. On the other hand, with my daughter, even though she was, she had severe hearing loss and learning disabilities, with her, it was music. Saved her life. She's the special ed pastor teacher she is today because of it, despite what everybody told her. I, I respect tremendously, and I've said this when you're not in the room, parents that advocate for their children and teachers that advocate for their parents and their students. I also know that the nine people at this board and the administrative cabinet here advocate for those students as well, every day, all the time. We don't unfortunately have the microphone to just say all the time what we're doing. It's, we'd be accused of sounding self-serving. So it's a fine line between telling people what we do and then being accused of being too proud of ourselves and patting ourselves on the back. But I will say, going forward, I think that as board members, perhaps we should take a little bit more of an opportunity to spend time discussing what all of us are doing as a whole. Doesn't change the fact that we're always doing it, but maybe people should hear about it, and perhaps they will take it the right way, that we're trying to inform and not congratulate ourselves. That's the first thing. In the upcoming budget, I certainly hope that we can concentrate on not just special education, which is important, which those students have suffered more than any, in my opinion. Maybe not. Maybe we can look at each group and say, perhaps, but I have, as I always said, a special affinity that COVID really affected those students the most. Being home and trying to learn on Zooms for children that have different learning styles is next to impossible. I also, though, want to keep in mind that music, sports, and the arts, we're coming, we're always doing budget. We start in May. When our first budget's approved, we're already, Harvey is working on the next one. So I know that. So as we're heading into full steam ahead, I'm very hopeful that we can concentrate and keep in mind that it's the whole student, because then you'll also have groups of constituents that will say, well, it's just about math and reading and science and history, whatever. It isn't. It's about a whole student. And you never know what's going to make that student's life. As far as the two teachers that you are, that the school district has put in for, hopefully we can find them, they are nearly impossible to fill, because there's every school district in Westchester that I know of right now, because my daughter was telling me she's a teacher there, are looking for the same type teachers, the specialties. So I certainly commend the fact that we're being proactive, and if we can get them sooner, I am sure Harvey, as tight as he is, will find the finances to do what he needs to do for our students. So thank you all to the board that sits here and really does know what they're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. Margaret?
So I had three things that I'd like to say in closing. You know, I always love the arts element of what we do in our school. I had the honor, the pleasure of seeing Susuko the Musical Junior, Lee Rhodes' show, last weekend. Amazing to see these kids up on stage. Just the fact that they can, at such a young age, have the presence to be able to get up there and sing and dance with such, and act with such confidence is such a, such a treat to see, but also has so many benefits long-term. I always think anybody, especially in elementary school, if you haven't tried the, been a part of it, you should, because it's a great, a great, great program. I also went to the Orange County Music Educators Association's All-County Concert this weekend. You know, we all know that there are tons of studies that prove how impactful music is to the brain's development. These kids received their pieces, so it was choir, band, and orchestra. They received their pieces in mid-December. They had one opportunity to, you know, have a rehearsal kind of thing, and then basically, they were on their own until 24 hours before the concert. They worked with all of the winners of different schools in the county, and it was amazing to see what they were able to accomplish. It was, obviously, they worked hard. They were able to give a concert that was just a testament to not only the skill of the musicians, but also of the musical educators who are able to bring out such amazing quality, technical skill, and joy through music. It was so, so wonderful to be able to hear the students perform at that high level, and even more exciting to see all the young audience members who, you know, are able to see these older kids and say, I want to do that someday, too. So it was, it was phenomenal. And lastly, I'm excited about the science fair coming up on the 31st at the middle school from 6:00 to 7:00. That's all I got.
Thanks, Margaret. John?
Hey, thanks, Brendan. So let me piggyback on, on Margaret about the music festival at the high school. We hosted it. Staff did a great job as being representatives of the district there. Hats off to our all-county participants, our musicians, choir, band, fantastic job. As always, we have a great music department, and it just shows, based on the, the awards that our kids earn year in and year out. So hats off to everyone on that. I do want to talk about something that I heard Teresa mention, and I don't want to characterize it in who, who suffered worse from the pandemic. I think, I think these are distinctions without much of a difference. I think parents suffered, teachers suffered, students, regardless of if they were in AP accelerated classes or undergoing AIS. I think they all suffered, they all suffered differently, but, 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 but everyone suffered, and, and I don't want to discount one group over another. I think it's important to acknowledge that we, we've sustained some loss, and it's incumbent on us all, all the stakeholders, community, district leadership, board, teachers, and the students, because they're the ones who are really in control of their own destinies, to, to fill the gap that exists. And so, thank you, Ms. Diaz, for coming out again and, and opening up your heart and sharing your experience. I, I, I'm committed to making that better. I understand that we have great resources in this district and in this community. My hope would be that we make good use of those, those resources, because no, not one of us is better than all of us. And so when I hear that someone's reached out and provided an, an offer of assistance, I, I would hope that we would embrace that, that, because life's, to have someone volunteering, you know, their, their, their time, their talent, their treasure is, is a gift, and, and to refuse that gift is, I think, it's not incumbent of the Cornwall that we want to be, and I believe that we are. So, so I appreciate your comments, Ms. Diaz, and I, I hope the resources that come your way and all our kids' way, especially in light of the tutorials that are just been on, online, put online, are able to, to help cure the gap. My, my fear is that it's not going to be a one-and-done for this year, and as Teresa mentioned, we need to, to focus on, on, you know, next year and figuring out where we really are when it comes to that learning loss, and then making sure that we're providing the adequate resources to, to address that, because it's not the fault of the kids. I'm not going to point fingers at anyone to blame, because always, when you do that, three fingers are pointing back at you. So I think we all need to be just committed to finding the, the solution and be problem solvers, because really, when I think about the, the brain trust around this table, that's what it's all about, solving the problems. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Beth?
Thanks, Brendan. I have three points. First one is the communication between community, parents, and the board. I got sometimes kind of like wondering, when I read an email from a community member or a board addressing the whole board, I wonder where they got their emails from compared to some other parents I hear from, where they are kind of complaining, why don't we publish our emails on the Board of Education website, which allows the parents to click on a given name or on the side, on the left side, communicate with one person at a time compared with the whole board. So I think we have to level the field and adopt a policy that allows everybody to email the whole board. I heard before the, the concern that to avoid phishing. I think that was Brendan, at one point in time, who responded to a community member by saying, we don't put our emails on the website of the Board of Education to avoid phishing. But again, as I said earlier, sometimes we receive an email, people supporting a cause or criticizing a cause where they already have our emails. So just level the field, make our emails available for everybody to email, all of us at the same time. Not to email, say, Terry, and we hear later, oh, Terry, I emailed you, you never replied to me. Well, let us know about it. Email the whole board with one click. Let's publish our emails. Number two, the responses to the, of the Board of Education, to the visitors' question. Everybody knows now, we do have visitors today. Everybody knows that, say, last year, even earlier this year, in the few meetings we had this year, the policy was, as we heard today from Mr. Carl, that, you know, we hear the question and we just nod, mm, okay, we make faces. That used to be before. Now the policy changed to kind of, we absorb the question, and then you hear the response in the following meeting. However, this seems not to go smoothly thus far. I heard questions last week where we didn't hear responses today. So I agree with, 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 with the, with the public, with our visitors tonight. That brings me to my third point about computers. That was a question raised last week, and I can tell you, when I hear a complaint or a concern from the community, sometimes it does not surprise me at all, because that's like something, mm, okay, yeah, I was expecting to hear that. Sometimes I hear comments that do surprise me. The computer comment I heard last time did surprise me. I have two questions to ask here, and let's make it public. Is it true that some students don't even have computers?
Beth, this is the board comment period. I mean, this is not like the board interrogation period.
No, I'm going to ask, because like, they, they shouldn't come. Visitors don't have to come every meeting, repeating the same questions over and over and over, right? We have to respond to them. So this is my question. Is it true that students, that surprised me. I didn't know that some students do not have computers. One. Number two, is it true that our computers are not up to par with districts surrounding us? Is that true?
Beth, again, this is a comment.
So these are my two questions now, on video, on YouTube. Everybody can attest to my questions tonight. Thank you.
Richard?
All right. So I want to start by thanking Colton for giving his student representative update. I know he was by himself. He had to read a lot of information, and he had to go home early to study for midterms. So I just want to thank him for being here and giving us that update. I also want to thank everyone who, who comes out from the public and, and sits here and comes out and speaks, whether that's this meeting, the last meeting, previous meetings. I know, I really appreciate you guys coming out. I think the, the board and everybody at this table appreciates it. You know, Mrs. Diaz, I appreciate your comments tonight. You know, it's obvious that you're very passionate in this cause and, and your willingness to, to support and help this district in any way that you can. And, you know, I just, I, I think as a, you know, as a district, we have to, I would hope that, that we reach out and, and welcome your support and your knowledge. So, so thank you for coming out, and your cause is very important. You know, co-teach classrooms are, are very important, especially in this day and age. I know another public comment that was brought up a couple of times was with the, the computers and the Chromebooks. And, you know, I, at some point, I'd like an update as to where we stand with our, our one-to-one initiative and, you know, what, what Chromebooks we have, you know, what, what are their specs? Are they touchscreen, non-touchscreen? And, and how were these decisions made? Just, you know, at some point, an update would be very helpful. And with that, that's all I have to say. And thank, again, thank everyone for, for coming out tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Richard. Jim?
Thank you, Brendan. So I'll just be very brief. Thank you to everybody who came out and commented. We always appreciate public comment, public feedback. The board does listen. We all take copious notes, and we do follow up as appropriate. We've improved our communication back in this format this year over what it was last year, and it's still a work in progress. We're working on updating board policies. So we always want to make sure that we are communicating with the public, and we're going to continue to try and work on improving that situation, and good luck to everybody taking midterms. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Larry? Larry?
First of all, I went to the Cornwall Elementary School musical, and my wife pinned it right on the head. She said, now we know that you can herd cats. There were more elementary school kids on a stage than I think I've ever seen in one place at the same time.
Some of them, some of them were off the stage.
Yes. As were their father. I have to commend John Hines for directing, and his cohorts, for doing what they did. That was an amazing undertaking. In a former life, I got roped into directing a play at a high school. That was tough enough as it was. I couldn't imagine doing it with a couple of hundred elementary kids. So congratulations. Now, on another note, we're going to need the public's help. I've been sitting here listening for, well, 17 years now. People asking for more, and, and whether it be more Chromebooks, more teachers, all valid requests. We are the third or fourth lowest per pupil expenditure in the surrounding 43 school districts. That's a double-edged sword. One, it's really nice that we're not spending that much, and lo and behold, our kids are still doing pretty darn good. But the other side of that is, is we don't have the kinds of funds. The next district to us, if I remember the numbers correctly, and don't quote me on them exactly, would be over a million dollars more their per pupil expenditure to work with than what we have to work with. Why are we like this? Because that's how the public wants it. That's how the public has voted the budgets. So just, this is something that, you know, we need your help. If we're going to be proposing a budget that includes what you're asking for, understand that you have to vote for it. Just a commentary. Thank you. Oh, one other thing. Richard brought up the other, last time, that why were we moving funds from our hardware to the Bozey's hardware? That allows us to maximize our dollars to buy those Chromebooks, to buy that extra equipment. So we are in the process of moving forward to being able to get more, more cost-effectively, plus we get aid on it, which allows us to then, again, to reinvest that money into more equipment. So we are doing. Thank you.
Thanks, Larry. Lois?
Thank you. Larry, I appreciate that clarity on those points. I think it's important that what you said gets said. Basically, you know, CJ, thanks again for, for his report. Looking forward to seeing Peter next time. And, you know, a lot gets said by the time it gets around the table, so I'll, I'll leave it at, you know, kind of on the heels of Jim. Good luck to all our students on the midterms upcoming. Thank you.
Thanks, Lois. Yeah, I wasn't planning to, but Larry, you hit the nail on the head. One piece that I just want to add to that for context, because I know a lot of people hear that we have the lowest per pupil expenditure, and the follow-up is, well, why are our taxes so high? And both of those things are true at the same time. Our per-house taxes are very high, but that's because all we have essentially are residences. We don't have a Walmart in town. We don't have Monroe Woodbury, we don't have Woodbury Commons that's pouring money into the local public coffers. So we are funding our grade school district almost exclusively on the backs of homeowners, and that's why you can have a situation where individual tax bills are high, but the school district doesn't have that much relatively to spend on each student. And a good point that I think people cannot be reminded of enough. Specifically, communication has been brought up. I think Jim said 99% of what I planned to say. This is a, so close, so close. And really, I could just leave it at that, right? I mean, forget 99. But this is a work in progress, and I think we, you know, we are getting a lot better at responding to comments that come in and specific questions and providing factual answers, if not on the spot, then two weeks later. And we will continue to do that. Like Margaret, I went to the All-County Music Festival on Saturday. It was an incredible experience, listening to the best high school musicians in the county across orchestra, chorus, and band. It truly was impressive. You go to these events and you don't, you're always surprised by the level of quality. And it's impressive on so many levels, not just the final product, but when you look out, I don't know how many, how many students were, were on stage, but across the three areas, I mean, it's in the hundreds. And you, you're reminded of all of the individual discipline and hard work that went into, that each of those kids put into it to get there. And you're also in the room almost exclusively with parents and family and what they had to put into to get there. It's an extraordinary collection of dedication, and I think the arts are such an important vehicle for this. I mean, really, like, what is education other than an opportunity to teach kids habits that will power them through life? I mean, it's not, you know, you hear the joke, oh, when am I going to need to know, you know, when the Treaty of Ghent was signed? Probably never, right? But the discipline that it took to learn that, to write an essay about it, that's what's going to serve you. And no other subject area in my mind teaches discipline and sacrifice better than the arts. Maybe there are some that do it just as well, but nothing better than the arts. And I say this at a board meeting, because these programs deserve our support in every possible way. Speaking of which, there was the CES Drama Club performance. It already feels like it was a year ago, because everyone who goes through it knows you get the post-show blues, and that distorts your view of time. But I just want to give a very quick and deserved shout-out, and I was planning to do this. I know some of them are here, but you can check my notes. It was already written, so I'm not ad-libbing this. There are many volunteers and Drama Club All-Stars, including John Hines, who directed it, Denise Carter, who is our choreographer, a whole list of volunteers and helpers, Annette McTeague, Carolyn Kulik, Peter and Dee Ireland, Kirsten Hauserman. We had two incredible students. This is something that the Drama Club does. We actually get students from the middle school or high school who help, who end up knowing the show frankly better than the adults do. Evan Lovell and Lucy Deitch were two of them this year. It is an extraordinary part of our program there. They play a huge role. And assist down the stretch from our past Drama Club All-Star, Sue King. But then also the, the volunteers. When we say, you know, when a kid signs up for drama, the parent signs up for drama, sometimes they don't realize that until halfway through, which is a nice surprise for them. But the extraordinary amount of work that, that all the parents put in as well, and of course, I have to call out my wife, Bridget, who is the only person I know who volunteers more than I do, which my two children will probably be telling their therapist about one day, perhaps soon. But these, these, these programs take so much to pull off. They are incredibly complex. So much of them rely on volunteers, which means it's a little bit tenuous, right? Maybe one generation doesn't have the people to pull it off, and that's why it's so important for us to support them at every opportunity that we get. These programs can seem like they're going to be here forever. We can take them for granted, but they are not. Everybody's got to put in on this. That includes us. So we can, we can sit here and we can, we can praise the performances, but I think that, you know, again, just as a high-level value, every time we get a chance, we need to support them as much as we can. Thank you. All right. A motion to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor? Oh, sorry, second. Always, always skip that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried. Thank you, everybody.